This local channel is sponsored by Michod Insurance. Since 1979, Michod Insurance has been providing comprehensive insurance options to our friends and neighbors. Find out how we work for you at 978-685-2549 or at michodinsurance.com.
Hello, I'm Carol Ann Russo, Government Services Coordinator for Methuen Community Studios. Welcome to our 2025 Election Candidate Forum. All local candidates were invited to participate in tonight's event. Some were able to join us here and present their views directly, while others could not attend. Every candidate was given the same opportunity to appear. Each participating candidate will have a few minutes to address the audience, share their vision, and respond to questions. As Methuen's local access station, we are committed to facilitating open dialogue and providing fair access to the public during this election season. Thank you for being here. Your engagement is what strengthens our community and democracy.
And hello and welcome to Methuen Community Studios as we present our 2025 School Committee Candidates Forum. I'm Seth Graham, your moderator. Thanks so much for joining us. Over the next 90 minutes, you'll have an opportunity to meet the people you'll see on the ballot on Tuesday, November 4th. A really quick rundown of the ground rules, they're very simple. We'll be asking all candidates a series of questions. Their responses will be timed. Now, they don't know the questions in advance, but they'll have the opportunity to be the first up to answer and also to have the last word. They've also been asked to come prepared with an opening and closing statement. Lastly, we ask the candidates to attack the issues and not each other. So without further ado, let's jump into the opening statements and we'll introduce our first candidate. Candidates, you'll each have one minute to do so, and we'll start with Alejandro Baez.
Thank you, Seth. My name is Alejandro Baez, and I would first like to welcome everyone from Methuen and all the voters and all the community members. I'd like to thank my distinguished colleagues and candidates for bringing their name forward and for serving our community. Like I stated before, my name is Alejandro Baez, and I'm running for the Methuen School Committee because I believe that as a student still in college, I am attached to the realities, the challenges, and the success that our students are facing today. My candidacy and my campaign is based on sustainable budgeting. It is based on smart and equitable teachings and curriculums. It is based on transparency and accountability. And finally, it is based on moving forward with a war on bullying. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Nick DiZoglio.
Thank you. And first off, I want to thank Methuen Community Studios, my other candidates here too, for agreeing to the forum, and of course, the residents at home. After proudly serving four years on the Methuen School Committee, I had the opportunity of serving you as a three-term city councillor. As I have termed up this coming fall, I have decided and honored to run again for the school committee. And to do that, I have been looking at how we as a city looked at our schools the last six years. We are looking for leadership grounded in fiscal responsibility. We need to have guided decisions made by data and also informed by real-world experience. Throughout my public service, I have never hesitated to ask the difficult questions or to stand up for what is right, even if it wasn't an easier decision to be made. I believe that every decision should reflect a careful balance between responsible budgeting and essential investments.
We're sorry, time's up. I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Our next candidate, Danielle Fantry.
Thank you very much, Methuen Studios, for having me tonight. I am a new candidate. I have two kids at home in the public school systems. I am an active member in the youth community through sports, moms groups, and the schools. I have volunteered hours at sport events, PTO, and the school events as well. I have substituted in the Marsh primarily as a teacher there. I have 13 years' experience running. I co-founded a Methuen Mamas Group.
Please continue. Please do continue, Nancy.
My stop sign is up. I served on the board of directors with Methuen Youth Soccer and have coached both of my kids and have filled coaching votes with other age groups. I plan to bring that same kind of energy that I have demonstrated in the past.
Thank you. Our next candidate, Maria Figueroa.
Thank you, Methuen Studios, for having us here and for the volunteers and Methuen residents, as well as the other candidates. My name's Maria Figueroa. I am a mother, grandmother, and wife. I am a Methuen resident passionate about public service. I have been active in public service for over 25 years. Part of what drives me is mental health, sustainability in the community, involvement, volunteering, giving back to the community, just being active, available, present, and family-centered practices as well. My hope is to, in running for the candidacy, be a voice for parents, for children, for families, and for the community to address issues that may need to come to the table and how to talk about that collaboration and building that home-to-school bridge so that we can work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Mary Beth Donovan Grassy.
Hello, Methuen. We're really lucky to be here tonight in these beautiful studios. Thank you, Seth, and staff for joining us, for having us here. Again, my name is Mary Beth Donovan Grassy, and I hope to earn your vote for a seat on the school committee. I believe that education transforms not only a student but an entire community, and I've devoted my life to education, 25 years in Methuen Public Schools. I taught ELA at the Tenny, grade eight. I became associate principal and then went back to school to receive two advanced degrees in educational leadership and curriculum and instruction. I ended my career supervising principal at the Tenny, where I was responsible for the education and well-being of 1,200 students, 150 staff, building operations, getting children home safely. Currently, I have worked as an adjunct professor at Merrimack College preparing students for teaching, and I really believe that I have the experience I need to make major decisions about the education of our students.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Our next candidate, Lori Keegan.
Thank you very much, Methuen Community Studios, for hosting us this evening and my fellow candidates. My name is Lori Keegan, and I'm running for my third and final term on the school committee. I moved to Methuen 30 years ago, buying my first condo on Washington Street two years after I graduated from Merrimack College with a degree in math and secondary education. I was a certified high school math teacher, a software engineer for 10 years, and a stay-at-home mom for my four children who have various medical and educational needs, ranging from autism to brain and spinal cord surgery. My children's needs led me to become an educational advocate and open a nonprofit in the Merrimack Valley, helping hundreds of low-income families obtain special education services to meet their children's needs. Those experiences taught me the importance of building relationships to make effective change. I took that experience and drive and decided that the only way I could advocate for all of Methuen's children was to be on the school committee. That's why I ran four years ago, and that's why I'm running again. I've worked hard over the past four years advocating for change on our sub-separate students, making sure that the expectation is that they will...
Thank you, Lori. I'm sorry, your time is up. Next up, Kristin Maxwell.
Hello, Methuen. I am Kristin Maxwell. I am running for reelection for school committee. I just, this is my first term, so I'll be going in my second term. I moved here in 2017 with my three kids and my husband. I immediately joined the PTO, school council, district committees, youth organizations. I volunteer with a lot of youth sports organizations, and I've helped run a summer camp for the last five years alongside pretty amazing people. I love what I do. These experiences have allowed me to meet so many of you, get to know your children, and deepen my commitment to give them back to our community. I'm seeking reelection because I believe every child needs deserves a safe, supportive, and engaging place to learn. I'm going to stop there because I'm going to get the stop sign, so vote for me, number three.
Thank you. Next up, Martha Saroyes.
I'm Martha McCarthy Saroyes. I'd like to thank MCTV Studios for hosting this forum tonight. I'd also like to thank Seth for being our moderator and all the volunteers that are here this evening. I would also like to thank the residents of Methuen that have given me the opportunity to put my campaign sign in front of their home. I am forever grateful for all of your support that I have received during my campaign. I retired September 2025 after 25 years of working, of a working experience with Methuen Public Schools. I have been a member of the Methuen Credit Union Board of Directors since 2018, offering me the experience in collaborative work on budgets and long-term strategic planning. I have also helped to raise and distribute tens of thousands of dollars for the previous Jacqueline McCarthy-Sanpaio Memorial Scholarship and the current Brianna McCarthy Memorial Scholarship. My work and volunteer experience lends itself to help me make an informed decision about the hiring of the next superintendent and the future of Methuen Public Schools.
Thank you. And wrapping our opening statements, Ken Willett.
Thank you very much. I just want to extend my thanks to Methuen Community Studios. I would be remiss if I didn't say hi to my children, Brady and Kendall, who attend Methuen High School, and also my mom, who's been such an asset of raising my children. It's been a privilege and an honor to serve on the Methuen City Council and by extension, currently on the Methuen School Committee. 14 years of service, 24 years at the State House, resolving thousands of constituent cases. This is going to be a productive, positive, constructive, eye-opening forum, and I welcome the fact that we have nine candidates. In years past, we've had just enough candidates to fill all the seats, or we've only had five candidates and we've had to resort to write-ins. This is so healthy in this community to have competitive elections. If you look at every single candidate's profile, we can be collectively proud as Methuen residents, and we should be making sure we're voting on November 4th. I thank you, and I appreciate your consideration.
All right, candidates, thanks so much. We're going to jump in now to our first question of this forum. Nick, you're going to be first up on this one. You'll each have one minute to respond.
She's very quick with these one minutes today, huh?
A quick minute indeed. The Methuen School Committee will be tasked with hiring a new superintendent in the coming year. Please tell us about your priorities and how the search should be conducted.
You know, first off, I was on the school committee when we did the last search, and I believe that the community should be involved in that. You know, the next superintendent needs to be, and not saying this one doesn't have it, but the next superintendent needs to be fiscal responsibility. We need to look at our current headcount, the way that we're aligned as a city from a school perspective. Are we still in that era of grade schools or grammar schools? Should we think about junior high? Should we think about elementary schools? Should we think about bringing trades back to Methuen Public? So the next superintendent has to have that national view or something that's not local. I think we need to have, again, citywide involvement with those candidates being selected by that committee with no school committee members on it, and then those candidates selected be presented to the school committee for decision.
Thank you. Danielle.
I believe that the next superintendent should have a lot of energy and really get into the school system and understand what they need to do as a good leader. I believe trying to find a superintendent, we can use third-party if we needed to. I don't want to close any doors, whether we promote from within or outside the school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria.
Thank you. I would like to see, as Mr. DiZoglio shared, just a universal, external, internal, whatever the best fit would be, but I would love to see us be a part of that process, the newly-elected committee members that Methuen chooses. But I would also love to see parents be a part of that process. I would love to see them come to the table, have their concerns, talk about the challenges that have been, and hear from the new superintendent that may be in question how they would engage, how they would participate, and what they would bring to the table. I think it's really important for the community to also be a part of that process somewhere along the way.
Thank you. Mary Beth.
Well, first, I'd like to thank Dr. Quan for her service. I think it's a very difficult job. Our next leader, I believe, needs to be truly an educational leader and not someone who's saddled with worrying about, you know, whether or not we have a leaky roof or not. And I'm grateful we're moving in that direction to focus on that. Our next leader must be a budget whiz. We are facing probably the worst budget that's coming at us in the coming fiscal year, and we have to consider what's going on with some of the federal cuts, which are going to significantly impact our special ed classes and offerings. That said, according to the MAS-C, the Massachusetts Association of School Committee, the process of hiring a superintendent takes three to five months, so we need to get started now. And I'm not saying we select the person now, but we start the process hopefully with an independent consultant who will take away any discussion, any sense of people influencing decisions. Thank you.
Lori.
I believe that the next superintendent needs to be focused on the education also. We really need to focus on making sure that our kids graduate from high school ready for the world, that they can read, they can write, they can do math, and they have the skills to collaborate with other people. I also believe that we need a third-party independent person or company to come in and do all of the legwork in finding candidates across the country, as well as from within, if there is anyone from within. I would never say that there's nobody qualified in the school system currently. We have some great people, and if they want to apply, I believe that they should. But I also believe that this is going to take a very long time. We do need to get the ball rolling, but yes, the next school committee will be selecting...
Thank you. Kristin.
So I would be looking for someone not in this community. I would be looking for somebody outside this community. I'd be looking for somebody with a lot of patience. I've been asked this question before, and patience was my first answer because they are going to be walking into a pretty big task. And I think that I would like to focus on someone with a good track record with student achievement, focus on rebuilding our system because our system's broken, and someone who is fiscally responsible and knows how to allocate the money in the right departments.
Thank you. Martha.
So again, I'd like to echo candidate Donovan. Dr. Brandy Quong has done a fantastic job as our superintendent. It's going to be some big shoes that need to be filled. I'm, as new superintendent, I'm looking for someone who's an educational leader, someone who has gone through the education system, as far back as starting as a teacher, becoming an administrator, assistant superintendent, and then a superintendent. I feel that a superintendent should know what goes on in the schools and how they're run, and I feel that that experience will help them lead our community into a better learning experience and safer schools. I also feel that I do agree with a consulting firm. I think we should hire somebody to come in. It's going to be a financial cost, but I think in the end it'll be worth the cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken.
If reelected, I have specific parameters. I do want to have a nationwide search. I do want to have a third-party consultant. I do not want to have any present members of the school committee involved initially in the process of manipulating the process. We will have a lame duck school committee with at least two members, one because of term limits, the other because of running for a different office. So you'll have two new faces automatically to the school committee. I think it would be a disservice to have the existing school committee. You can set up the foundation, but to manipulate the process, I would not be in favor of that. I believe we need to have a nationwide search. The audit was very critical of the current superintendent. I would encourage everyone to read the findings of that audit, and we do need to move in a different direction. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alejandro.
Thank you, Seth. I have been very vocal about this issue. I believe that we need a nationwide and outside hire. I'm not discouraging any members from within to apply, but my philosophy and my ideology on this issue is that an outside hire is necessary for the restructuring and redevelopment of the administrative system. I'm looking for a superintendent who, I agree with other candidates on this, is a budget whiz, as candidate and member Donovan had mentioned. But I also want a candidate that has experience in special education, as half our budget is special education, and yet the audit shows that we are graduating 61% SWD students with disabilities. So I believe that a superintendent that's a budget whiz, that's an outside hire, and who has a focus on special education and restorative practice...
10 seconds.
...is key to moving the district forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, candidates, moving on to our next question. Danielle, you will be first up for this one. Again, one minute for response time. The school district made headlines about a major pest control and cleanliness issue. Tell us how you think it was handled, or what would you have done differently?
Absolutely. I think once things came to light, even though they had been neglected for far too long, that the process has been going better. It started off kind of rocky and disorganized, a lot of issues with, between pest control and the schools and communication. I believe the new digital system that they have in place now is going to make the facilities running much smoother, and hopefully we'll be happier that these schools are cleaner. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria.
I think it had a bumpy start, but I also appreciate the fact that, you know, the transparency was there. The mayor did put out the page where people could share their concerns, keep that line of communication open. The discussions were ongoing, and the collaborations were there. I know Pest End worked really hard to do what they needed to do, but I also know, you know, the teachers did their parts, the students did their parts. Everybody had a hand in making this reach the end result possible that it needed. So I think, you know, the bumpy start, we went in the right directions, the conversations were had, and we were able to together get to the end result goal that what we wanted is what a healthy, clean environment for our children and families.
Thank you. Mary Beth.
Well, I like just about everyone else in the city. It was absolutely horrified at what we learned. It was not acceptable, but from that darkness came some really good things, specifically the Building Task Force, which our mayor has put together. I'm fortunate to serve on it. We meet monthly. We talk about everything from mice to rugs to where food belongs in our schools. We're moving in the right direction, and we have a purposeful plan now, a dedicated schedule of how we'll be ripping up all those 25-year-old rugs in our grammar school buildings, on how we're dealing with rodent control, how we're fixing up the outsides, and now we're at a point where we're even talking about how to beautify our campuses with plants and flowers. And I think from that has come a whole new respect for our buildings, and I'm grateful for that and the cooperation between the school committee and city council led by the mayor and Dr. Quong.
Thank you. Lori.
As Mary Beth had said, I was also horrified at how bad things had gotten. However, as soon as it came to light, I feel like it was quick. The mayor immediately stepped up with funds for us to make sure that our schools got cleaned. We've switched pest control companies. Shoot, I had something to say, and I forgot. I apologize. That's it.
Thank you. Kristin.
I'm probably not going to give the answer that everybody wants to hear, but I don't think that we've done enough for the pest control and the situations in our buildings. I think our buildings are in pretty bad condition, and it's due to years of neglect, you know, partly on the city, partly on administration. I think a lot more work needs to be done. I think we've only scratched the surface. These students and staff, they deserve healthy and reasonable buildings to be able to learn and teach our students, and right now, that's not what they have. So I know that's probably not the answer everybody wanted to hear, but we need a lot more work on our buildings. We need a lot more focus. I do appreciate the mayor's task force. I think he's done a lot of work, but we've had mice in our school since I moved here, and that was very obvious. So I think that, I think that a lot more work needs to be done. I think that maybe if the task force continues, we'll see a little bit more of improvement, but a lot more needs to be done.
Thank you. Martha.
So I'm very grateful for the task force. I think they've done a fantastic job. I'm grateful to Mayor Beauregard for funding the cleaning up of the schools. However, I believe that if our budget was a budget that would include these things, then that wouldn't have happened. I feel like our budget is cut every year. We have to scramble to decide where we're going to spend our money for Methuen Public Schools, whether it's going to be on books, or whether it's going to be on mice, or whether it's going to be on feeding the students. And I feel that if our budget is funded correctly, then these issues will no longer exist. And I want to thank the hard work of the custodial department in collaboration with the Methuen Health Department, who really stepped up and cleaned up these schools in a quick amount of time for what they had to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken.
This is really a triage situation. I returned back to the school committee, and I noticed the previous two years, they had one maintenance report. So immediately, I ordered to have monthly maintenance reports, and I also started to receive confidential feedback from teachers, and I relayed that directly to the administration. I think the mayor has done Herculean tasks, and I also have to commend the Methuen City Council and Councilor DiZoglio. They voted every single time to release emergency funding to help with our schools, and that's what we always needed, was collaboration and to break down the silos, and we're doing that. We're breaking down the silos between the Methuen School Committee and the school administration and the city council, and we still have, like Member Maxwell indicated, we still have a huge task ahead of us, but we're working together. Thank you.
Thank you. Alejandro.
Thank you, Seth. This is a huge issue, and I look at it through the perspective of a student myself. I'm grateful for the task force. I'm grateful for the current school committee's efforts in trying to remedy this issue, but this also goes to pride, pride in your school. I went to the Tenny. I currently go to the College of the Holy Cross, and if I know that if I enter a school which is being talked about in the news, which is being criticized in the paper, it's going to make me feel some type of way as a student, and it's not going to be helpful in the way that I learn. So I'm grateful for all the effort that has been going into this issue, but like Member Maxwell has said, we need to do more, and it starts with the budget, as candidate Saroy has mentioned as well. Correct me if I'm wrong, point of clarification, but our budget, our maintenance budget is shy of what it should be, shy of what it should be. It's hugely off-base.
Time. Thank you, Alejandro. And wrapping this question will be Nick.
Thank you. You know, it was said that Mayor Beauregard and the city council and school committee did work together on this to make sure emergency funding was provided. This is, this overall was a citywide effort. A lot of action was done, a lot of moving parts happened, but what I have not seen is accountability. Yes, we can make it beautiful, we can make it clean, and we could talk about, you know, how we're going to...
how we're going to, but no one talked about accountability. Why did we get here? How did we get here? We can continue to blame the budget, but the audit did come out that our allocation is off. We had communities in the same budget with more kids and less kids, but the same value. So we need to look at how our schools are being utilized. We need to make sure everyone's held accountable, and we also need to say, you know, neglect happened here. We need to fix that problem first. Thanks very much. Thank you. All right, our third question. Maria, you will be first up on this, and we're going to make it a little bit more open-ended here to address a topic of your choosing. What do you see as Methuen's most pressing educational challenge, and how would you address it?
Oh, that's a good one. That home-to-school connection, that partnership with the parents, that dialogue, that communication that is needed. I feel as much as education is key, its foundation starts at home, and I am a firm believer that every parent wants to do right by their child. But if there are conversations that are not being had to allow that opportunity to build that bridge from school and home, you're not going to get the parent volunteers, you're not going to get parents involved, you're not going to get the presence that other schools are getting. I think that is one of the biggest pressing things for me, is really building on that partnership, that collaboration with families and community collaterals as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Beth?
The most pressing issue, I believe, is literacy. In the last few years, we've made some pretty impressive strides with the new literacy initiative based on the science of reading, but we know that reading is everything. At our fifth grade, our fourth grade level, 58% of our kids this past year were at stand, I'm sorry, were considered reading proficiently with our own benchmarks. That's just not enough. It's actually a better rate than the national level, but it's not enough, because students who learn to read contribute to a community, and a community of literate residents, you see a lower tax, you see more taxpayers, wealthier taxpayers, we see a lower criminal rates along, you know, people breaking the law, we see a healthier community, we see all positives. So we need to continue to focus all our, as many efforts and as much money we can, as continuing and strengthening our literacy initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori?
I believe that mental health is one of our biggest educational challenges. When kids come into the buildings and they sit in a classroom and they have mental health challenges, they're coming from homes that aren't feeding them or aren't treating them well. They're bringing all of that baggage into the classroom, it's causing behavioral problems in the classroom, which is causing them not to be able to learn to read, not be able to learn to do anything. And somehow, we need to figure out how to manage the mental health problems that are walking through our doors, because they're getting more and more significant, and our teachers can't manage those by themselves, so we need to figure out how to help that situation so that our students are able to learn better.
Thank you. Kristin?
I think that we have quite a few pressing issues, but I'll start with bullying. I think that bullying is a huge issue in our school system. I don't think that we have enough resources or help to fix the problem and target the real issue. I also think that IEP compliance is one of our biggest issues, considering that half of our budget goes to special ed. I would start by getting the request that I made and maybe figuring out how we can bring our students back into the district. And as a mom, the most pressing issue in the schools, I would say, is fun for the students. I'd like to see field trips, I'd like to see parents back in schools. I would love to see students running down the halls, giving high fives to their teachers and principals. Those are the issues that I find the most pressing for Methuen Public Schools.
Thank you. Martha?
So I have to agree with the literacy initiative. That's a big one, I know. Not too many years ago, we had reading tutors that would come in and take small groups of students into a different area from their classroom and do reading projects with them. Because of the budget, those are no longer available, those positions. Mental health, absolutely. We need to have more help in our mental health department. It's very difficult for teachers to manage their classroom when they're dealing with student behaviors as well. And the other issue that we have is our job posting, our openings. We are very short-staffed in program assistants, custodians. We really need to, I really don't know what else we need to do. We've advertised, we've gone to job fairs, and I'm just not sure how we would solve that issue as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
It's a great question. I think leadership and accountability are intertwined, and to just reflect what Councilor DiZaglio indicated, I was one of two votes. Member Maxwell and I voted against the superintendent's contract before the audit was even published. They locked her into a three-year contract. Obviously, if you look at the findings, the metrics of the audit, it was bullying and discipline was lowly rated, professional development and staff morale, that goes directly to administration and accountability. Obviously, we had issues with the inspectional services department for the city of Methuen. We had internally people not following up on Pest End reports. There was a silo mentality, there's a culture of fear, and that's something you can't accomplish anything if you need to change leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Alejandro?
Thank you. I'd like to make it known that all of these issues are pressing. None of these should be ranked higher than the other, and I would like the community to take that into consideration. For me, I have to agree that IEP compliance and special education is, for me, priority in terms of what am I looking for, for example, in a superintendent? The audit shows that we are not being compliant in IEP cases. The audit shows that bullying is a huge issue, and again, I want to thank the mayor for declaring a war on bullying. Finally, low staff morale and favoritism in the schools. We need to do a better job, as Candidate Saroy mentioned, in advertising job postings and getting staff that are bilingual, staff that represent the community, staff that are in touch with the realities of our students to be able to-
Ten seconds.
Thank you. To be able to give our students a chance of relating and learning in a healthy environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick?
All the above, I think, a little bit here. I mean, there's no, I don't think there's a right answer. Everything here is correct. It starts at leadership, works its way down. It starts in the classroom, because the teachers, you know, the morale is down, maybe the students' morale goes down. Parents, there's issues at home, you know, that feeds back into the students and literacy. I mean, it all is intertwined and connected. And for me, as a father and a husband of an educator, I see it daily, coming home. My children, they read. I make sure reading is top key. Literacy is huge. If we have students, it's been a proven fact, that students that know how to read and write will go on and graduate and move forward, and crime rates will go down, bullying will go down. Mental health would be better. I mean, we're all talking about the same thing, and we can't, I can't say a budget is to blame on this. It's morale. Our teachers are very important, and we need to make sure that those jobs are filled and made aware. I'm trying not to just cut it off. Thank you, I appreciate it. Jeez, I don't want to sound uneducated here while we're all talking. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Danielle, please.
Such good answers. I mean, we have so many issues, so many things that we need to continue to work on. We've brought up a lot of issues tonight. I would love to see community involvement. It's amazing at what the community can do when they're working together. I mean, ZPW came in and helped out cleaning up the buildings. We had goats. Yes, we had goats. And I think by the community being engaged, we're opening up conversations, and conversation is important in working together to get things done. Thank you.
Candidates, thank you so much. We're going to take a quick break here, but before we do, I just want to take one moment to let you know, watching right now, more information about how you can vote on Tuesday, November 4th. You'll find that on the city's website at methuen.gov. There you will find all of the information about which precinct that you belong to and where you should show up to vote for these wonderful candidates on election night. So with that, we're going to take a quick break. Please don't go anywhere, as the 2025 School Committee Candidates Forum continues here on Methuen Community Studios.
This local channel is sponsored by Michod Insurance. Since 1979, Michod Insurance has been providing comprehensive insurance options to our friends and neighbors. Find out how we work for you at 978-685-2549, or at michodinsurance.com.
Whether it's our stories, the warmth of our laugh, or our family's secret sauce, we all bring something different to the table. So make some space. The power of connection is waiting right outside your comfort zone. Learn how you can help strengthen your community at belongingbeginswithus.org/ tima.
Hi, I'm Leland Melvin, and I traveled to space twice as a NASA astronaut. Space technologies help protect our precious Earth. Space helps us monitor changes in carbon emissions, track the pace of climate change, it even helps us fight natural disasters. Make sure that you get out to your local science museum, or go to spaceforall.us to explore and learn about space and science. Space is for all.
Community Studios, this is the School Committee Candidates Forum. Thanks so much for joining us. I'm your moderator, Seth Graham. And by the way, if you're enjoying this programming, this is coming to you from the studios of MCS, Methuen Community Studios. If you want to see more of our programming, we invite you to like and subscribe on our YouTube channel, we're at Methuen TV, or you can log on to methuentv.org, where you can watch us live or later. Now, let's get back on into the questions. Mary Beth, you're going to be first up on this one, and you'll all have one minute to respond. Now, many of you touched on special education in the last segment, and that's what this question's about. I want to talk about out-of-district special education costs. So for outplacement, that brings the total per-student cost for the district, averaged altogether to $22,000 annually. And a state DESI report shows the city has 12.6%, 12.6% of students in those separate schools and facilities, and that's above the state's target. Should Methuen invest more in in-district special education services?
Absolutely, and that's a really good question, and that's one of the things that I will be working on and supporting if elected. I think there are opportunities to bring students back into our district. It's something we tried to do last year, but because of budget constraints, we could not. We were going to bring in a special program to come in and work with staff, work with students, to start building capacity. I think we're all better when we have our students in our community learning, being with their neighbors, being with, you know, everyone that surrounds them, not having to make long commutes to school, so that is absolutely without a doubt. It'll save, it'll cost us some money in the beginning, but it'll save us some money and truly support our students in the long run.
Thank you. Lori?
Absolutely. It would be fantastic if Methuen could have their own public day program in district, just like Lawrence does, just like Lowell does, just like Haverhill does. We tried to do it in the last budget cycle. We were going to have a public day program for the autism sub-separate kids, and we needed $2 million to do it. It wasn't, we didn't have the money in the budget to start it, and so therefore, we had to give it up. You know, to try to bring kids back into district, it's a parent's decision, they have the input, we can't just say you have to come back. And so we need to start building capacity so that we don't send kids out to begin with, because those parents fight very hard to get their kids out of district, it is very unlikely that they're going to want to come back. So we really need to build a program in district and then start filling our kids that are here already. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin?
So the last time I asked for numbers, we had 176 kids out of district. Back in April, I requested some data to find out why kids were out of district, what their needs were, what wasn't being met, what homeschool they belonged to. I'm still waiting for that data. So once we get that data, I think we can really narrow down our search into why we have so many kids out of district and how we can bring them back. I also think that we would benefit from an alternative school, and I know nobody wants to hear that because it's a budget constraint, but I do, I think that our students would benefit from that a lot. We have a lot of tier-two, tier-three behavioral support that we need to address, so yeah, I would like to see where our needs are. Is it reading? Is it writing? Is it behavior? Is it OT? Is it PT? But I'm still waiting on those numbers from April, so when I get them, you'll get them.
Thank you. Martha?
So again, I'm going to bring up the budget, like I have several times this evening. Like Member Maxwell, excuse me, Member Keegan said, there was a program lined up to come in this year. It takes several years to get a program set to where it needs to be to provide for our students, and it was going to take $2 million. Again, that was something that was cut from our budget when we were told that there's one number that we get to, and that's it. So that was also included in the cuts that were this year. It was another great opportunity for our families in Methuen to keep their children in district and to not send them out. We save money with tuitions, not sending students out, and we also save money with busing our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
I think ultimately is an issue with the state in terms of funding. I think it's a misnomer about the circuit breaker, that people are under the impression that Methuen receives 100% reimbursement for federal and state mandated special education, and that's not the case. The taxpayers of Methuen have to pay initially $52,000, and then the threshold could be fluctuating anywhere from 65% to 75%. I've been advocating for 90%. It really should be 100%, because the funding should match the child. You have children with profoundly medical issues that often require one-on-one coverage. I would love to have an opportunity to reallocate resources locally and to find a facility, but we also need state partners on that. We were very fortunate at the last second to get an infusion of additional circuit breaker money and the amount of $3 million to help us, because we have had massive layoffs. We have to do better in our partnership with the state. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Alejandro?
Yes, Seth, as I mentioned before, one of the biggest priorities in my platform is special education. Now, I'm in total agreement that we need to bring our children back in district. To do that, however, we need to have the correct data, as Member Maxwell had mentioned previously. Once those, once that data is out there, once the investigation has come to fruition, we can know what we need to do, whether that be the reallocation of resources. Do we have the staff necessary, the infrastructure, to be able to do this? Those are questions that need to be answered and need to be prioritized. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick?
Public day program, alternative programs, I've been asking for it for almost 10 years. It's been on the wish list every year, so I agree with it. It has to be funded. Now, nothing's ever been cut from the budget, so I want to make sure that's clear. If something is being allocated, if I have a budget of $120 million and I want $10 million, but I get $123 million, nothing was cut, all right? Positions and requests come in every year in the budget cycle, we don't get the full request. And yes, every year, this request is not fully funded or funded, but nothing was cut. When you cut a budget, you go from $120 million to $119 million, that's a million-dollar cut. The budget keeps going up every year. We're just not allocating the funding correctly, or we are not allocating it where it needs to go. But yes, we came up very close to a deficit this year, and we got the funding at the end so that we did not have any cuts. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Nick. Danielle?
So I have a child that's currently on an IEP. In several years, we had considered outplacing him because he was not making the progressive improvements that we really wanted to see. But ideally, we chose to keep him in the Methuen school system, which was great because he's formed so many relationships with his teachers and other students, and it was really difficult decision to want to have to pull him out of the system. I don't think that any child should have to feel, or parents should have to make that decision of pulling their child out of the school system. So it would be wonderful if we could have a better special ed program here, but ideally, I don't think it's in the budget at this time, and we need to keep working on trying to find a solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Wrapping this question will be Maria.
So I am going to come from a grandparent-parent perspective as well. I'm not going to talk about the budget because everything that needed to be said was said. But I agree with Ms. Danielle. It's very hard, it's very difficult. Kids should be home, that connection, that community, the resources that we have, that collaboration should be there. But if they are not feeling that we're meeting the need, if that mindset that we hear over and over again, that we want to do what is in the best interest of your child, and a parent's not trusting that, sometimes they're left with no other alternative than to seek that out-of-school placement and advocating for their child. So yes, in-home sounds ideal. It would be a good goal to see somewhere down the line, but budget, taking all those things into factor, we have to do what's in the best interest of the child.
All right. Candidates, thanks so much. We're going to move on to our next question now. Lori, you will be first up on this, and we're going to talk about the audit. A recent audit of the school district identified communication, and that's from routine notes home to responding to parent concerns, as an area of improvement. How would you encourage administration to improve communication with families?
So the audit made some recommendations of communicating with families once a week. We already do that. And so the fact that communication is an issue, I think first off, we need to figure out what type of communication parents need and want, because we're doing it a lot. We have the data, we send out weekly newsletters, we have parent, teachers sending out talking points, but people keep saying it's not enough or it's not what I want. So we need to figure out what it is that people want and need, and then we need to develop a plan to meet those needs. But until we know what people are looking for, just to say that communication isn't good enough and we need to do it more often, it doesn't really make sense. So I would say we need to first investigate and then come up with a plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin?
I can speak on this as a parent, and I do know that the audit came out and gave a poor rating. I do think that we need a lot of help in the communication department when it comes to parents. So parents were pushed out of the district when COVID happened and they were never invited back in. We need to invite parents back in. We need to make them feel welcome. We need to make them feel like they're partners in their child's education and not an inconvenience. Anytime a parent reaches out with a concern, it's your problem, not ours. And instead of that attitude, I think we should make it our problem and not the parent's I just want to, I just want to bring parents back in the district. That's all I can, that's it.
Thank you. Martha?
So we do, the schools do send, the principals send a weekly newsletter home to the parents. There's a monthly flyer that goes out, an actual paper flyer about sports and other activities that are happening in the city. We have a PTO in every building that's always struggling for volunteers and people to join their committee. We have a school council in every school where parents are invited to sit on and join. And like Member Keegan said, I'm not sure what parents are looking for. If they would let us know what other communications they would like, I'm sure that that could be taken care of. Parents are not involved enough in the schools, sadly, but true. And I think if they got involved in some of these activities and things that are happening in the buildings, they would see that it's a great thing to be a part of.
Thank you. Ken?
I think there's different means of interpreting communication. Again, I encourage everyone to read the audit because I think there's been silo mentality that's been established, there's been a culture of fear. I know the teachers have a sense of hopelessness, that their issues are not being addressed. I know that the parents conveyed that, the students even conveyed that. And if someone is being bullied and it's not being resolved, that's a lack of communication. If there's a language barrier, that's a lack of communication. If the teachers don't find merit in what they're doing as a position and they go elsewhere, that's a, that's a communication issue. The central office, I've said that repeatedly, there's been communication issues. So I think the survey we did, we have to continue to do the survey as part of the audit. It's crucial in that front.
Thank you. Alejandro?
Yes. I'd like to tackle this issue two different ways. The first one is communications with parents and the community in general. Now, from my understanding, communication is bilingual in official documentation and letters to parents and whatnot, but I would like to know, are the newsletters that are being sent out bilingual, the flyers bilingual, the communication and the informal communication, the cultural responsiveness of the communications, is that being addressed? And secondly, in regards to the institution, institutions like school councils, PTOs, CPAC, LPAC, how much of those are being manipulated by administration and leadership to push out parents in maybe in a purposeful or not purposeful way, but those are, those are barriers that are created that we need to address? Thank you.
Thank you. Nick?
Thank you. You know, I, I know we're doing it. We've been doing it for 10 years, parents, teachers, administrators. Maybe it's the volume, maybe it's the lack of volume, but a part of it is, again, we don't know exactly, the communication's a very ambiguous term here. But the audit brought up that the schools, though, are different. So even though one school might be doing a lot of communication, one may be doing something smaller. It's not universal. So I think that's where we need to attack, is making sure all four schools, from a grammar perspective, then the high school should get a different type of involvement, but those four schools, from a grammar perspective, K through 8, should all be on the same page on communication. The way they interact with parents, the councils, the PTOs, the way that newsletters go out, it all should be aligned in the same process, and the audit said that it did not. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle?
I agree with a lot that has been said so far. I believe that parent engagement is critical. I feel that we're trying multiple different ways to communicate. Talking points, I think, has improved. I've been looking at my talking points more frequently. However, I think just the energy in the schools, the morale in the schools is affecting parents at home, and they're, they don't want to participate. They don't want to come into the schools, so we have to find a way to get that energy back into the schools through events. I don't know necessarily how to do that, but thank you.
Thank you. Maria?
So communication, it's a challenge, and I'm coming again from a parent perspective. I think parents are, they want purpose. They want a sense of belonging. They want to understand, and sometimes it's, as they shared, there's newsletters. Are the newsletters going out in a timely manner? Some of the things that I hear from parents is, you know, I'm getting this, but it's last minute. I work, I don't have time. Some of them are single-parent households. So it's how is that communication being sent? And do you have accurate information for the parents? Is all that data up to date? And just making parents feel welcomed when they come into the school. Let's get grassroots. Let's just talk to them when they're there, take advantage and have these conversations, and find out where those breakdowns are so that we can kind of get past that bump in the road. But it is an ongoing challenge. I can attest to that as a parent.
Thank you. Wrapping this question, Mary Beth?
It's hard to be the last person to respond. I think the question is about consistency in communication, and also, communication is a two-way street. I can tell you as a principal, sometimes my emails were blocked by parents because I was emailing too much, and sometimes I don't want to hear from myself, and I get that. But if you look at our website, you can go to the schools and see every Friday, every principal posts a newsletter about what is happening. Our talking points, parents have the ability to access in their language they are most comfortable with. The most successful opportunities for communication happen when parents are invited into the schools. And I've been lucky enough, we've all, if you've been on the school committee, you've been invited to all these great activities, to the Read Across America, where you can go in and read and you meet other fam, and families there participating. The biography fairs, the, I don't want to say wax museums, but the living museums where all these wonderful opportunities. We need to meet the parents there and expand our conversations.
All right. Candidates, thank you so much. We're going to move on now to our next question, and we'll keep talking about the audit. Kristin, you're going to be first up on this one. Again, a one-minute response time. So second question for the audit. It showed concerns about higher-than-usual out-of-school suspensions and inconsistent discipline enforcement. What would be your recommendation to district administrators?
So I think that, I think that we need to start and, and repurpose our discipline procedures to begin with. I think that we should have in-house suspension, I think we should have detention, I think that we should have Saturday detention. I think that the principals, the supervising principals really need to be the lead in discipline and communicating with kids. I do think that we have a high suspension rate. I don't think that it's unnecessary because a lot of our problems are, a lot of our problems are behavioral issues that, I don't want to say IEP behavioral issues, but behavioral issues meaning kids just don't like something so they fight with each other, or their feelings are hurt so they don't play, or, you know, my biggest concern with discipline really right now, though, is I've heard a lot of parents complain that recess has been taken away from their kids, so we really need to focus on restorative practices and bringing them back.
Thank you. Martha?
So in-house suspension and Saturday suspension is a great idea for the high school, in-house suspension for the elementary schools. Saturday suspension, students can't get a ride home. They can't get a ride there, and they can't get a ride home. So that's always been, for the lower-grade levels, an issue with that. I think a lot of our suspension issues are mental health issues. I think that we need to find a way to be able to keep these children in school. Again, I think our mental health department needs a boost in, in staff and more education on how to handle these different issues. And I think that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
It's such a complex issue, it really is. We only have two RIS specialists in order to conduct in-house suspensions, so we do have a disparity. I would prefer in-house suspensions because if you have out-of-district, excuse me, out-of-school suspensions, you don't know the mindset or the dynamic on the home front, and I'm very concerned about that. I'm also concerned about internally how we track bullying and discipline issues. I don't think we sufficiently, sufficiently track bullying and discipline issues, so we really have to redouble our efforts. Part of it also is the state, because we are limited in how we can handle discipline issues and bullying issues, and so we need to reach out to our legislative delegation. Unfortunately, PBD had a suicide because of bullying, so I recommended to the mayor of having a bullying summit and also a bullying task force. And I know the mayor's going to follow up on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Alejandro?
Yes. Just like there needs to be consistency in communication, there needs to be consistency in discipline. I see a disparity between the numbers of bullying claims that are substantiated, unsubstantiated, and the bullying in the audit. Why is that? I would like to know. I think our suspension rate is way too high, and we need in-house suspension, we need restorative practices, and we need a new superintendent that is going to be focused on the war on bullying and making sure that our practices are in line with an equitable school system that brings all of our students in in a way that doesn't promote structural and systemic bullying that is not reported, like Member Willett is saying, that is systemic in a way that is not even being reported. We see the disparity in the audit and in the, and in the bullying, in the, in the audit and in the bullying numbers that are reported. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick?
I mean, as a former student of Methuen Public Schools, I got detention quite a lot back in the day, so, and, but, but what got me out of it was getting involved in sports and extracurricular activities. We really should be promoting the arts, promoting other opportunities for students. And that was why, back in 2016, when I came back on the school committee, we saved the performing arts program, and we kept it going, and we saved it again this year. Things like that should not be thrown out because these type of programs bring new light to students who are expressing themselves. You could agree or disagree about mental health and, and the bullying, but it starts at expression and their ideology. I think ultimately, if we started doing more in-house suspensions or more community service instead of sending the kids home to play on their PlayStation 3 and Xboxes and TikTok and doing all those videos, that gives children better opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle?
I kind of agree with Nick here. Out-of-school suspension, I feel, is stressful on a child who may already be stressed out at home or at school. Maybe there's a mental health component here. You know, maybe we need to look at other schools, what their current policies are, and try to work on a new policy to keep the kids here in the in-house, potentially community service, just to help out. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria?
I, first of all, want to say thank you to each and every one of the candidates for touching on mental health and bullying, because behavior, it is really important to keep the kids in school, definitely in-house suspension. But I think this is, there is a missed opportunity for us to reach out and collaborate with the resources, the rich resources that we have in our community and in our surrounding community, to work with professionals for behavioral health and social-emotional development, that we shouldn't only keep this institutionalized, that we partner and collaborate with agencies, and we have these conversations with parents. I love and appreciate that Willett, Ken, did bring that up, and we were able to talk about it, and the mayor is all for having a committee for bullying because, again, these conversations need to happen.
Thank you. Mary Beth?
Well, I believe it was late last year, the school committee approved creating some new positions focused solely on addressing behaviors. And then we asked for data when we hired these positions, and we found that having these, these staff, highly skilled, staff members in place to work with students before the behaviors escalated, made a huge impact on classroom behaviors, definitely lowered disruptions in some, in the areas where you didn't want to see any disruption or anyone else feeling uncomfortable, and made a, made a very positive impact according to staff and other students about getting ahead of the problem. And what we did see was a reduction in suspensions and office referrals. I'd like to see that program expanded. When I was principal at the Tenny, a long time ago, well, not that long ago, we went kind of rogue, and we had our own Saturday detentions for tardies and behaviors. We found a tremendous improvement in behaviors, and I'd love to see that continue.
Thank you. Lori?
The out-of-school suspension rate is extremely high, and I'm the one that actually started asking for the out-of-school suspension rate because the laws are pretty clear about you're not suspending kids. And so... And so, I feel very strongly that we need more staff to be able to keep kids in school for when behaviors do happen in the classroom. We need to remove them and manage the behavior, manage whatever's going on. And I believe that our discipline needs to start with education as opposed to punishment. And so, you know, the first thing shouldn't be detention. It should be, you're now assigned at lunchtime to go to a group to learn about whatever it is, so that we're educating the kids and we're teaching them how to behave as opposed to just saying, "Don't do that." Thank you.
Thanks so much. We're going to move on to our next question, and Martha, you're going to be first up on this one. So, this question is going to touch upon the most recent school committee meeting. But that being said, I would encourage a broader discussion about what was a major topic. So, here's the question. Please tell us how you would handle a parent's complaint about curriculum or course materials?
So, I would definitely direct them to the superintendent and the assistant superintendent. I don't feel that I'm qualified to talk to them about the issues that they have. I feel that when parents do come to school committee, I think that they should be directly sent to the administration. I know a lot of parents have issues with the curriculum and the issue that we had at the school committee meeting the other evening. Parents have a right to opt out of things. I don't know if parents are aware of that. They should be. And I just, I don't know, I just think that a lot of things should be directed to the administration. They're the professionals. They're the ones that should be handling these questions from these parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
I mean, obviously, I'm in favor of a universal parental opt-out in relation to issues of sexuality, if it impacts someone's religious and moral objections. There was a debate internally about what would be primarily within a course. Again, if any type of sexual reference, graphic material, things that could be objectionable to someone's religion, someone mocking someone else's religion, automatically, there should be a parental option to opt out, and I'm strongly in favor of that. There was never any discussion about banning a book. I support freedom of speech, but I also support the minority right under the Constitution, reinforced by Supreme Court decisions, to emphasize there is parental rights and that we should not be abandoning those parental rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Alejandro?
Yes. I believe this is an issue that goes down to checks and balances and constituent services. The three incumbents sitting at this table know that voted by however many votes, 2,000, 1,000, 3,000 votes, that the community put a trust in you to handle issues of constituent services. Now, it is checks and balances. I do believe that the administration does have the qualifications to handle these issues and to handle the timeline of answering these issues. However, I also believe that these checks and balances go both ways. There was never a discussion about banning a book, yet the agenda item language, which is written by, point of clarification, the chair, the vice chair, and the superintendent collaborate on writing the language of the agenda, whether or not a member can say, "I want this on the agenda" or not. The language was chosen purposefully, and that is not right. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick?
After the last meeting, I should have bought stock or trademarked the word "ban." But here's the thing, is the word "ban" never came up in any of the conversations that the school committee put on that agenda, and I don't think that was the intention of anyone that brought that to that conversation. I think it was about policy. What is the policy if this type of book is being subject-mattered in your classroom? That's what I believe it was. But the school committee's job, in all respect, is policy, budget, and the superintendent. Anything outside of that should be directed to the professionals, which are the superintendent and their staff. Where this is a policy question, I don't see why it couldn't have been added to the agenda. But I do not believe banning that book was any topic of discussion that was the point of that meeting the other day. But again, I think it went a little too far. I think it got out of context. I think the discussion should have been quick, not four hours long.
Thank you. Danielle?
I think sending parents through proper channels is a necessity. Obviously, as a school committee member and a parent, you want to empathize with the parent, get to understand where they're coming from, you know, what's going on, but ultimately, they need to go through administration and a follow-up potentially from the school committee member to make sure that things have been addressed properly.
Thank you. Maria?
Thank you for asking this question, Seth. This one hits home for two reasons: personal and lived experience, and this is my job in the community. This is part of what I do, is really empowering parents to know who their contacts are in the school. Some of the feedback that I get is, "Well, I've gone to administration," and the gaslighting and the redirecting, and that you should talk to this person, that person, the other person. Parents don't know who to trust and who to talk to. When I give them a name, they're surprised. They're taken back and saying, "Why wasn't I given that from the beginning?" Instead of having to tell my story over and over and over. And some of these stories are re-traumatizing. And I think we need to be mindful, considerate, compassionate, that when parents bring these attention, whether it's to administrators or not, they're trying to reach out to someone they trust. And it may not necessarily always be an administrator, for whatever reason. So, apologies. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Beth?
Mr. DeZoglio was right on. We have three jobs to do as a school committee: policy, budget, and supervising our superintendent. We have experts in the field that make decisions about curriculum and instruction, and instructional materials. That's not our job. We are not equipped to do that. And those people understand what students need to be engaged and how they should be represented in the materials. I believe when the school committee opens the door to these kinds of discussions, they bring along their personal and political beliefs, and that's very dangerous in a public education environment. We are a public school. It's a responsibility of the parent as well to find out what is going on, and we know that there are syllabi, there are open houses, there's opportunities for parents to find out what their students are being exposed to. And we have to start trusting our educators.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Lori?
I agree with what Mary Beth and Nick both said. It is not the school committee's job to get involved in the day-to-day business of the school. That's not what we do. And so, when a parent comes to you and has a problem with something that's happening in the school, we need to direct that person to whoever it is that can solve that problem. We are not the problem solvers for the day-to-day issues. We are the policymakers. We are the superintendent's overseer. We are the budget people. But that's it. And in this particular instance, this parent could easily have been referred to the high school. It is common practice that you can opt out of English books. My child opted out of the kite runner when she was in ninth grade, because it had objectional material. So, absolutely, this situation should never have made it to the, to the, to the school committee at all. Thanks.
In wrapping this question, it will be Kristin.
Okay, so, I would like to say that I agree with, I don't know who necessarily said it, but this was politicized and dramatized completely. These items were brought to the table by me. I brought these, those two topics to the table, and I did, in fact, tell the parent to go to the superintendent. However, when you have a superintendent that parents do not feel like they can talk to, or principals that they can talk to, they have nowhere else to go. We, as a school committee, do, in fact, approve curriculum, and I think that we need to be a safe space for parents if they don't feel comfortable going to administration, and I will continue to do that. I don't regret bringing those two topics to the table, and I would do it again in a heartbeat.
Candidates, thanks so much. That concludes our questions. We're going to move on to our closing statements now. You'll each have one minute to do so, and we'll begin with Ken.
I mean, this has been fantastic. And I want to thank, again, the volunteers at Methuen Community Studios. I want to thank you, Seth, such a veteran of all these debates and forums. I want to thank my fellow candidates, because I don't think we engage in any personal attacks. We had deep conversations. And sometimes, when you disagree about an issue, that necessarily means that you're attacking that person, or that you're negative. You're in disagreement on the issue. And we had turbulent times the last two years. We had the passing of a beloved mayor. We had the resignation of a superintendent. We had an audit. We had two budget crises that we had to handle. We had to deal with a cellphone policy. We had to deal with, obviously, maintenance issues and bullying issues. And we have tested the waters. We've made significant improvements. We've worked in collaboration. Methuen should be proud, and we need to work on those goals further. Thank you.
Thank you. Alejandro?
Yes. First and foremost, thank you to MCS, to my fellow candidates. This has been lovely to learn where everyone stands and to have the platform for the voters to know where we stand. I have personally learned through this forum, per se, that the most important quality for me and an elected official, and when I'm casting my vote for the other school committee members, is authenticity. And I think that a lot of us have been authentic today, and I know that I have been authentic today. So, for the voters, vote authenticity. Vote passion. I also want to say that I live my life by two quotes that define my ideology. The first one is, by a Greek philosopher, "If you know, you know you know nothing." And the second one is, "Injustice somewhere is a threat to justice everywhere," Martin Luther King Jr. And I will bring that to the table. I humbly ask for one of your votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Nick?
Now, clock starts now. Okay, great. Thank you. You know, being a homeowner here in Methuen, a father of two amazing children, Aiden and Olivia, and the husband of an educator, I come to this job, again, with integrity, transparency, and purpose. I've enjoyed every minute of my dedication to the Methuen Public Schools and to the city of Methuen, and I couldn't be prouder of the amount of people that have come out this year to run for office, not just in the school committee, but also at city council. It shows that we're moving in the right direction. People are getting involved. People are talking. When I started in these roles 10 years ago, you know, it's crazy to believe that, again, that people were just being slotted into this. As a former student in a Methuen public, I'm proud of where I come from. I'm proud where I'm at, and I look forward to hopefully getting your vote on November 4th, number one on the ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Danielle?
Thank you very much. I believe that a key component of having a successful school committee in the next couple of years is hiring the proper superintendent, getting community engagement, parent engagement, morale in the schools. I think that a lot of these issues in the schools has been started and is progressing nicely, and we need to just continue on with all the work, the great work that has been done so far. And I hope that we are very successful in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria?
I want to say thank you for inviting me here. Thank you for everyone for your input and feedback. It is very much valued. I love that I was able to make the connection about really what drives us, what we're passionate about, and it is definitely our community. This is home. So, I just want to say, you know, what you see is what you get. I definitely have had to get outside of my comfort zone. I'm used to doing this work behind closed doors, not publicly speaking, as I have been doing lately, but I have been so grateful for that, and I appreciate everyone's curiosity, everyone's desire about wanting to learn about one another, and the opportunity to have these civil conversations among my peers. Thank you. Thank you for that, and I hope I get your vote.
Thank you. Mary Beth?
I hope I made myself clear in the opening comments about my qualifications for this job. I've devoted my life to education in Methuen schools, and I hope to continue that. And while I have a minute, I hope, left, I just wanted to share with everyone the importance of literacy. I started the Methuen Literacy Partnership with Representative Hamilton, the director of the Levens Library, Krista McLeod, with support from Mayor Beauregard. We believe that literacy is not the responsibility just of the school district, and we want to involve everybody, including parents, community leaders, in our efforts. We've started up the process. We're beginning some research in the next few weeks, and we're hoping everyone will log on to www, can you see this? methuenreads.org. Sign up. We'll reach out to you, and you can help transform this community.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Lori?
Thank you. I've been a Methuen resident for 30 years. I've raised my four kids here. My youngest is still at the high school. All of my kids have unique educational and medical needs. I've been the founder of a nonprofit to help kids with special ed get the services they need across the Merrimack Valley. You know, I've served on the school committee for the past four years. I've showed up. I've done the work, and I've delivered results. You know, I worked on the teacher contracts on the negotiating team. I'm on the policy subcommittee, working through every single one of the school committee policies and trying to make them up to date. I've done a lot, and I understand the challenges and the budget coming towards us. It's going to be a really tough budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin?
So, I wish there were 20 people that were running for school committee, because I think that that would bring value to the district. I welcome opposition. I think that it's, I think it's great for people to disagree on issues so that we can come to a common ground. I think that's the role in a school committee. You're not all going to have the same view. Making a difference has become my purpose. It's everything I want. I want to make a difference for kids. I want Methuen to be a place that's desirable for families to live. I want to be a part of that. I started as an involved, informed parent, and I want to continue by being an involved, informed decision-maker. Vote for me, number three.
Thank you. Martha?
I'd like to thank, again, MCTV and Seth for inviting me this evening. I'd like to thank everyone that's on the panel this evening. I thought it was very enlightening to hear everyone's opinions and to have just a nice, civilized conversation. It was fantastic. I was, I've lived my entire life in the city of Methuen, known as, well, the town of Methuen known as the city of Methuen. I graduated from Methuen High School in 1981. My children, Jennifer and Joey, graduated from Methuen High School '07, '09. I just love this community. I've worked for the school department for 25 years. I want to continue to work for the students, the staff, and the families of Methuen Public Schools. Thank you.
All right. Candidates, thank you so much. A wonderful discussion. Thank you for running. Thank you for being here for this forum. We appreciate it. And now, it's your turn. Tuesday, November 4th is the day. Please go vote. The polls will be open all day long. You can find out more information online at methuen.gov. And it'll be a quick goodbye, so thank you so much for watching. I'm Seth Graham. For all of us here at MCS, take care.